...with the pledge of allegiance and then we'd ask to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanada, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you all. Vanessa, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Sanada?
Here.
Commissioner Vogler?
Here. Commissioner Kennedy is here today, but he had a meeting outside of the building. And, uh, but we're able to conduct our business because as long as there's two of us, that constitutes a forum. We, uh, as we do each week, we set aside time for public comment, uh, both at the beginning of the meeting and then before we adjourn. If you'd like to speak, you're very welcome to speak both times or one of the two times, or if you're just here to listen, that's also fine. We ask that your comments be relating to county government matters and that, uh, if you could try to limit your time to around five minutes, we would appreciate that courtesy. We always set aside time for any of our O officers that may have anything to talk about, but today, uh, I'm sure they're all busy in their respective offices. So that takes us to public comment, and I'll open the floor if anybody has a question or a concern at this time. Hearing none, again, we'll, we'll do this before we adjourn as well. Excuse me, under fiscal and contractual, we have two warrant registers that have been submitted to us by the county comptroller's office. It's a listing of the checks that they have cut. And they are dated October 20 and October 22. Chris, I'll give you whatever time you need to look them over, and whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to accept these documents.
You'll move our ready chairman, and I make a motion to accept the documents.
I thank you, and I'll second your motion, and I'll ask you if you have any questions or concerns. Okay, thank you. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The same would apply to the minutes, the minutes of the, uh, October 21 meeting are here and, uh, Chris, if you've had time, look them over, if you'd wish to make a motion for us to adopt them.
I have had time, I can look them over, it's fine, I'll make a motion to accept them.
I thank you, and I will second your motion, and assuming you have no questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. We have two documents, uh, under written communications that will enter into the record. The first is from, uh, a local company, a company based here in town, specifically Union Township, AMG Chrome of 207 Friends Drive. They are submitting to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, the Air Quality Division of DEP, a plan approval application for the construction and installation of air emission sources located at 207 Friends Drive in Union Township. And it's signed by Jason Dean, the head of manufacturing for AMG Chrome. The second document, uh, comes from AmeriCall Aggregates of Butler County. Based, uh, they are giving us notification of a blasting schedule, uh, that will take place, um, at their sites in, uh, Chango Township, specifically the Mostefan North Quarry, uh, in the vicinity of Savannah Road and Reno Lane, again, in Chango Township. And it goes on to specify, uh, the blasting schedule as it relates to the mining operations there. Chris, uh, any concerns or questions about these two letters?
No.
Would you care to make a motion for us to accept them?
I make the motion to accept the letters.
I'll second your motion, and, uh, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Commissioner reports some comments. Uh, Mr. Sanada, you are up first today.
Uh, well, Chairman, um, it's been, it's actually, it's been a very busy, uh, weekend up through the, uh, today, I was making some comments, uh, in Lawrence County, hoping the weekend we had some really good events. I had the opportunity, uh, to stop out for, uh, PA 250. They were out at the Cheeseman Bright Farm, uh, my first time, I was actually out there, beautiful facility. Lots of people were there, Jenny from, uh, Lawrence County set up with them. They brought the band, it was the 67 counties throughout Pennsylvania, ours was on Saturday morning. So I got an opportunity to do that, go out there, then I went downtown Newcastle, stopped down in Confluence. They had a, uh, group, um, that was organized by a lady named Dante Thrice, um, and had all the nonprofit agencies within Lawrence County. We're invited to participate, and we had a very good number. I was very pleased to see, uh, Jesse from our veterans' office in the county, and Jerry Stone and his team were down there as well. Represented us, and, uh, you have almost, mostly all of the nonprofit, including the Grange in Lawrence County, was represented down there. So I think it was something that I thought was very nice, to get people, um, to understand the programs that are out there. I had a chance to stalk the community while I was out in their, uh, drunk retreat. And I, I'd never seen so many kids downtown, whether it was cooperating or not. There was a lot of candy passed out there, and they had the opportunity to shoot the Halloween City, and, uh, my chance to, uh, actually participate in the, uh, Halloween parade. It's the first time I actually participated in that walk, and so. And I will let you chair and, uh, elaborate on my last stop, which was down in Waltham, uh, for the Richie Allen, uh, dedication. It was a master ceremony, so I will let you give all the details on that. So that was my Saturday. And yesterday I had a chance to, uh, head to, uh, unpleasant, uh, and join with our, uh, recycling team, Jerry and Megan, and, uh, we had a few other people with us. And Jerry's going to be speaking to us earlier in the meeting, uh, concerning the, uh, glass recycling plant. So I had a chance to tour that yesterday on behalf of the county, and I was quite impressed with that. That's it, that was, that was the weekend right up and through that, so. It's probably even more I can discuss, but in order of time, I'm going to turn it over to you, and you can tell us the rest.
You and, you and Mr. Kennedy were able to attend the, uh,
Oh, yes.
SPC meeting yesterday.
Yeah, that was, yesterday was the double, uh, yesterday, I actually, then I went to Pittsburgh with Commissioner Kennedy, who serves actually on executive board, he goes an hour before me, because, uh, that year, uh, that went very well as far as, uh, us being there, and, uh, that was, that was yesterday, basically. Thank you for reminding me, it's been so many, it's on the go.
You've been on the go?
Yes.
Well, thank you, Chris. I was also able to stop out at the Cheeseman Bright Farm out in Slippery Rock Township, uh, for the America 250, uh, visit. It was a ni- nice, nice attendance, and, uh, a lot of people get confused. They, they think that the farm out there is in Butler County because it has a Porter'sville mailing address, but it is located in Lawrence County, right on the line, but it's on our side of the line. The blue side. Probably just upset some people in Butler County, but so be it. We did have a nice day in Waltham with the dedication of the, uh, Dick Allen mural. If you, if you're down that way, it's, uh, the corner of, uh, Main Street and Church Street. It's a beautiful mural. And I, I want to thank the Newcastle News for the nice coverage that they gave for that event. I do want to take a minute and look ahead a little bit. I'll note, uh, and I might repeat myself later in the meeting, but next Monday, the 3rd of November at 9:00 a.m., the Board of Elections, which consists of the three commissioners, we will hold a public meeting in this room. It's a tradition, usually the Board of Elections convenes the day before the election. Mr. Germany will give us an update on where things stand, and, uh, generally, we keep that meeting open. We recess the meeting, we keep it open in the event, hopefully unlikely event that we would have to convene on short notice. Now, on the 4th, which is Election Day, one week from today, the courthouse is open that day. We will be open on the 4th. However, again, it's a tradition, the Board of Commissioners do not meet on Election Day. We're usually assisting, if they need assistance, uh, with the voter, uh, voter services, uh, office. Also looking ahead, two weeks from today is Veterans Day, uh, November 11. And we will be closed that day, you know, that's a federal holiday, and we will be closed that day in observance of, uh, of, uh, Veterans Day. And, uh, we will meet, the Board of Commissioners will meet on November 18, which is Tuesday, three weeks from today. We will have our regular public meeting at 10 o'clock, followed by the quarterly meeting of the Retirement Board. And that consists of the three commissioners, the county comptroller, and the county treasurer.
Dan, we also are going to have a special meeting?
Yeah, I was going to get to that. I'm, I'm going to need your help with that in just a second, thank you. Because on the 25th of November, which is the Tuesday, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, there will not be a public commissioners' meeting. That's the fall conference of the State County Commissioners Association, it's held out in Dauphin County. Now, because of the fact that in the month of November, right now, we only have one regular meeting schedule, which would be the 18th, we do anticipate having a meeting, what's the date again?
November 12.
November 12, which is a Wednesday. That would be, did we say 10 o'clock? At 10 o'clock. So since we can't meet on the 11th, we are going to have a meeting on the 12th, Wednesday, the 12th, also 10 o'clock. And we'll get the, uh, public, uh,
I just said it this morning.
Okay, thank you, so the sunshine law requirements will be met. So just to summarize, uh, no commissioner meeting. It's not that maybe it's going to be the early, did that change, Vanessa?
Without a, in front of me, do you have our calendar pulled up?
We'll get it, because of the sheriff's sale, it's going to be,
But you know what, you're, you're correct.
Oh, that's right, there's a sheriff's sale at night.
It is in the 30, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I just was about to add that.
No, thanks, Chris. Thank you, I didn't write it down, and you're right, there is a sheriff's sale at night. So, thank you so much.
Yes.
So the 12th, which is a Wednesday, there will be a commissioners' meeting at 8:30 a.m., public meeting in this room. So let me start back over, but thanks again, Chris. No commissioners' meeting on the 4th, that's Election Day. No commissioners' meeting on the 11th of November, that's Veterans Day. There will be a commissioners' meeting at 8:30 a.m. on Wednesday, November 12, open to the public in this room, and we will have the, uh, legal notice, uh, within the next few days. We will meet on November 18 at, uh, 10 a.m., however, we will not meet on November 25, uh, because of our commitment to attend the statewide conference, uh, in Dauphin County. Now, if an emergency were to arise, we can always convene a special meeting, we have to give at least 24 hours public notice. Let's hope that doesn't have to happen, so, uh, sorry to take all your time on that, but I wanted to get the schedule laid out for everybody. So thank you all, again, thanks, Chris, for catching that one matter. We move on to new business, and we have a couple of proposals today from our recycling and solid waste, uh, office. Who's going to talk today? Is it Jerry or Megan or both?
I'll get started, I'm likely to hurt Megan, well,
That's fine, have a seat. Have a seat, Jerry, it's good to see you both. What number are we starting with, Vanessa?
358.
358. The first proposal would be for a, an application to the Department of, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, uh, for the, uh, 904 Recycling Performance Grant. Could you tell us a little bit about it, please?
Sure, this is an annual offering, uh, from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection that, uh, county recycling, solid waste departments and authorities are eligible to apply. One of the things about this particular program is it's guaranteed funding, as long as you basic requirements for recycling and that, uh, this takes that's worth, and it is, the award is based on the amount of recyclables that were generated in the previous calendar, so you don't need 2024. Grant typically runs anywhere from 20,000 to 30,000.
Since we have our partnership with Mercer County, are you doing a similar grant from, from Mercer? Or will this grant cover both counties?
This is specific to Lawrence County, and because obviously there are recycling programs in Mercer County, Megan will actually be preparing the 904 grant application for Mercer County.
That's good enough, thank you. We, we do enjoy, I think, a great working relationship with the three commissioners up there. I hope you've experienced the same, I'm sure you have.
Definitely, they're working together.
They're, they're all three good people. Thank you, I'll see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions.
No, that's great.
Well, that being said, to allow Jerry and Megan to move forward, uh, Chris, would you wish to make a motion for Resolution 358?
I will make a motion to support, uh, Resolution 358.
Thank you, I will second your motion, and assuming you have no other questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 359 would allow the county to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Mercer County and a, a company known as Carry All Products. Uh, this involves the, uh, glass recycling program, which I'll let you speak to.
Sure, we go from the relatively simple thing to, uh, something that's a little more detailed. So, uh, for the past several years, um, we've seen glass recycling removed from a lot of curbside programs, including our original Blue Ben drop-off program. So, um, you know, we had a lot of requests to the public to renew state glass recycling. And of course, over the past couple of years, uh, Megan has made arrangements with Pennsylvania Resources Council to have the temporary bin, you know, that we see at the courthouse, uh, once or twice a year, we've done that for the past two years. So last year, Megan applied for a section either two grant to Mercer County. And Megan, what was that award total?
About 160, 170,000.
And what that grant allowed us to do is actually move forward to a permanent glass recycling program for both counties. So, um, basically, it will be for both counties, an extension to the Big Blue Ben program, where we're going to have two sites for glass recycling in Lawrence and, uh, two, probably three sites in Mercer County for glass recycling. This being a partnership opportunity, one of the things that the grant covered was the, uh, construction of a glass bunker, uh, where the glass from the sites would go, we'll accumulate about 20 tons of glass, and then we'll end up at Carry All Products, which is what the MOU is called. So, uh, the city of Hermitage has graciously allowed, uh, partnered with Mercer County, and, uh, we have constructed through the grant a bunker that is already in place. And, uh, containers for the glass recycling program are being built as we speak, and constructed as we speak. And so what this MOU would be for would be to get the glass from, uh, site in Hermitage to Carry All Products in new, uh, new stand.
Forgive me, which is where you were yesterday?
Yes, I'm not planning, yeah, yeah. We, we got off the new stand exit to get to Mount Pleasant, but yeah, it was, uh, but yes. The city of Hermitage, again graciously, they're going to use their equipment and staff to move the tractor-trailer, moving their glass to Carry All Products. And, uh, Carry All is going to process the glass, and we've locked the program.
So this is very good news. And, uh, I'm sure you two have been working very diligently. I, I made note of the fact, but I think there's a good explanation. You indicated that you anticipate two drop-off sites in Lawrence County and three in Mercer. And, you know, I, your immediate knee-jerk reaction might be, well, why can't it be three and three? But I, I think there's good reason for that. Number one, geographically Mercer County is quite a bit larger than Lawrence County. And they have a higher population than we do, they've got about 18,000 or 20,000 more residents than we do. So I can understand why they might get three sites and we get two, so. I, I assume that was factored into your,
That was important, I think that they had some extra money left over from COVID, and they thought that they could get an extra container for it as well. So it kind of falls in line with the fact that geographically, they're, you know, they've got almost twice as much, land as we do here in Lawrence County, so that helps spread the program out.
Thank you for that. Well, I tell you, I, I, I think this is great news, and, uh, can't thank you both enough. I'll see if my colleague has any questions.
Yes, so Jerry, these bins, a lot of two locations in Lawrence County, are they going to be year-round?
We're, we're going to start, um,
How does that go along?
The plan is we're looking at year-round, we're going to see how it works over the winter, we may have to close it down for the winter. But, you know, right now, our goal is to have it available, glass recycling available year-round.
That's what I was going to point you, because right now, you would have a special day or two throughout the year. So, I know with people, we're always getting parts, how do I get rid, how do I get rid of this glass? I think I had a call, you called us, and you gave me that name, told me that this is what it's going to be. So this is, uh, this chairman, this is really great news for Lawrence County, a nice company from the grant. Actually Mercer County is quite generous and, uh, offered their assistance on this, especially with being able to store it, the bunker and all that stuff.
Yes, and, you know, um, and one of the nice things is that this should bring our costs down. Because, you know, when we would have the, the bin at the courthouse, or whatever the bin may be for glass recycling, it's $900 a week. Versus, you know, we can set the bin down, if it takes three weeks to get full, four weeks to get full, it's $250 a week. So it's going to be much cheaper when we're able to offer a continual program versus the, the, uh,
Yes, so this really is good news, and I, I just talked a little bit about yesterday, I got a chance to see the plant. I was quite impressed with the operation, I never really got a chance to see something like that. And with the glass, and, um, the, separate everything, uh, but I won't tell you, it's dirty. And we had a ice cream storm when we were there, so I didn't get back here, I had to take a shower before I went down to Pittsburgh, just because that's, we got that stuff all over, but, uh, yeah. It's, it's just something that makes it feel a little positive for us, you know, this town. If you want to add anything else, we saw yesterday, feel free to.
Sure, you know, Megan and I, we always like to pour the facilities where our materials go. It really helps when we talk to our constituents and say, yes, your material is getting recycled, and this is what happens to them. You know, so anytime we have an opportunity to visit one of our partners, in that, uh, in that process, we can take advantage of it. Megan, have I missed anything with the burden?
Yeah.
You know, and on the lines of Megan is trying to gather a tour of Owens, Illinois, up in Brockway. So the glass, once it is processed, um, in Mount Pleasant, it will be transported for actual glass-to-glass recycling to, uh, Owens, Illinois, in Brockway. So again, we'll see the end result there, and Megan is working on putting something there.
Looking forward to seeing that.
Well, yeah, thank you both enough, appreciate all your hard work on this. This is, uh, Resolution, uh, 359. As we've discussed, the memorandum of understanding with the county of Mercer and Carry All Products. Chris, would you wish to make a motion for this resolution? I'll second your motion, any final thoughts? Okay, thank you, uh, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you both. As always, you're welcome to stick around, but if you have to head back, we understand. Have a great day.
You too.
Rebecca Schenker is with us today from the Planning Department, good morning. Hope you're doing well. We're going to talk about the, uh, county-owned Stabbage Bike Trail, which, uh, is located in both Union and Mahoning Townships and runs, uh, adjacent to the, uh, Mahoning River, gets a lot of use. My colleague on the far end, uh, rides his bicycle, I sometimes take a walk on it. You're looking here to apply for a, uh, local share account, uh, grant from the Commonwealth, specifically the Commonwealth Finance Authority. And we're, look, so we're going to apply for, uh, $661,685 for the project. But give us some more details if you could, please.
Okay. I think as you're aware, we were awarded, like, in first phase, I believe, I'll say, I believe, back in '24. So in '25, we applied for the same, less the thousand, a hundred thousand dollars. So as we sit here, we still have our '25 in, but we're not real sure, you know, where that's going to go from. So we went ahead and are applying for the entire amount again, minus the one we were awarded, if that makes sense. Okay. So we are trying to phase it in, so we have, you know, hopefully it will be successful this time around, but one never knows. So, um, it will entail, um, a resealing, everything as far as fence replacements, culvert replacements, some work in the trailhead, if you're aware, there's, there's a, there's like a landing there, but, um, and a new kiosk and benches. So depending on how we go and how successful we are, um, you know, what we can do. So, but that's what we're here for, is asking, we have to have this resolution into the grant, in order to proceed.
Well, it's, it's certainly a worthy, uh, worthy cause, and, uh, I know that you and your fellow staff members, uh, treat the Stabbage Bike Trail like it's one of your babies, uh, folks monitor it and take very good care of it. So I certainly would support us moving forward, but I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Sanada for his comments.
I just, I echo, uh, because, you know, with trail, it's that usual for Lawrence County, we continue to promote tours and, and it's, I live in, very far from it, I, there's always a lot of cars there, and people are utilizing it, and, uh, you know, we could continue just making, well, just get Ohio to kick in their share. That last mile's a little rough, but, uh, ours, it's always been good. That's due to the efforts of your office, and, uh, so you're, it's fun, so it's not cheap. Nothing, we maintain it for the county, and, uh, straight up bananas, so. Always talks about, you know, we kind of try to be more efficient there, especially those trees fall once in a while. But, uh, we want to, we want to make it nicer.
Yes.
That's the premier bike trail this week, we must do, we ain't right, our operations, that we want to continue. Thank you for your contribution.
Well, unless you have anything else that you'd like to add, uh, you can move forward. Chris, would you care to make a motion for this resolution?
I make a motion that we have support this resolution.
Thank you. Number 360, I will second your motion and request a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thank you so much.
Just hope you have a great day.
You too.
Next item. It is Resolution 361. And I'll note that, uh, back on October 7, the commissioners passed Resolution 319, which authorized a letter of intent to be sent to the, uh, Roman Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh, relative to, uh, property that they own here in the city of Newcastle, specifically in St. Joseph the Worker Church, located at 1111 South Cascade Street, in the fourth ward of the city. That correspondence was forwarded to the diocese, and we have received a response indicating that the diocese has accepted the letter of intent, and they have provided the county with an agreement of sale. What this resolution, number 361, would do is as follows. Board of Commissioners wishes to enter into an agreement of sale by and between the Most Reverend Mark A. Ekman, Bishop of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh, successor trustee for the Holy Spirit Parish Charitable Trust. That would be the seller, and the purchaser would be the county of Lawrence. The terms are attached in an agreement of sale, and the purchase price will be $60,000. Uh, the terms are attached in an agreement of sale and the purchase price will be six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, by taking this action, this will now allow us to respond favorably to the, uh, communications that we have received from, uh, the diocese. Is the solicitor still reviewing those documents to your knowledge?
I think he's reviewed them and approved us to move forward.
Yeah, you read the resolution.
Okay, so obviously the resolution, he okay, but to your knowledge, he looked at the supporting document.
He did.
Okay. And I, I looked them over. Uh, the church has a couple of stipulations, uh, in, in their proposal, I would be comfortable with. And in our original, uh, proposal to them, we acknowledged that for at least eighteen months, we would permit the ongoing, uh, process of the, uh, food bank, just food distribution program that they have at that site. So we would, uh, work with them to allow that to continue for a minimum of eighteen months. And, and, you know, that's a year and a half from now and we could revisit it if we need to. I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Vanasco and Solicitor Mador and my two colleagues who've worked on this as well. Chris, I'm gonna call on you in one second, but I, I wanna see from a technical standpoint, procedural standpoint, have I missed anything about this?
You explained it perfectly, Commissioner. I have nothing more that I can add, but I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Thanks again for all your work on it. Mr. Sanada, questions or comments?
Yeah, Chairman, I think this is important day for Lawrence County. Um, I think that the efforts that we made, I don't know, especially with Commissioner Kennedy and his efforts. I think, you know, we have a diverse board up here. Commissioner Kennedy is very good, uh, well, I think with his hands when it comes to building properties and being able to, uh, he knows what he's fixing. He knows how to fix things, okay? Fortunately, I don't have that, that skill like he has. But as far as, you know, and I said it at the prior meeting, we, we looked at many properties in Lawrence County. We looked at lots of stacks. I wasn't there for five years, and I thought we got new chairman. They moved out of the shared, uh, the mutual building. And then we looked at, uh, Tomlin Building. And Joe and I took a walk down the town mall. When we were talking about selling it, just checking it out, just to see sort of value here for us. Uh, then the opportunity came for Saint Joe's. And, you know, we had our needs. The needs were there. Uh, and I know that you insisted and we all agreed with this, we need to keep this within the city of Newcastle. We wanted to be as close to the, the main campus as possible. So this opportunity stood rise. I know Commissioner Kenny, I looked it over. Uh, Joe, I went out a few times as well. And we looked at multiple times paying those tours and started saying, what could we utilize it for? And I think that's was the most important thing, what can we utilize it for? Jerry, so now in this room today, Jerry, that's probably gonna be your new home. Something you need desperately, uh, but CYS, we're looking at our storage for our own shakes, which is critical. And, uh, we're gonna be saving money right up front when we can get those machines out to do the new facility as compared to paying rent. My only thing in this whole thing was I did not wanna pay rent. I don't believe as a government we should be paying rent. I believe we should be owning facilities because when you pay rent, you owe nothing. By buying this facility for, for the price, I commend you, Joe, for your skills. I also commend the, uh, the diocese for working with us. Because in, in the end, the bottom line was we wanna make this something good for the community. We did not wanna see a building sit empty for potentially many years in a, a beautiful east side community. And, you know, sadly, we've seen too many buildings in Lawrence County sit idle, deteriorate to a point that they become slums and then eventually taxpayers get stuck tearing, tearing these buildings down. Um, and you don't want that. Saint Joe's is a beautiful facility. There's a lot of history there. There's a lot of, uh, you know, families that they could, you know, baptize there, communities, everything. And, uh, I can assure the people that as, as the county, we are gonna respect those traditions. Um, and we're gonna make it something very nice. And, you know, look, the amount of money we're spending in the big picture is very minimal considering what's out there. And I know we had talked that we want to deconstruction and build a new facility. So Vanessa, was it fifteen to twenty million dollars? At least fifteen to twenty million dollars. What we can do here and make this a facility, and you have room for growth. Long, many of us won't be around, but the county will be in a position where they will never have to really for our facility again, at least, you know, the next fifteen years. So I think this was not, you know, when you get into one of these major decisions like this, we didn't take nothing lightly. Um, and I look more at economics and numbers, I guess that's somewhat of a doctor that I have. It really makes economic sense for us to do this. And we're gonna be saving money in the long run. And if things work out the way they are, I know that we're gonna be leasing space at this facility to generate revenue for the county. I think that's a major issue because we're not just spending money, we're gonna, we're eventually gonna be making money. And if it works out, you know, this will be a very minimal effect on the taxpayers in Lawrence County. It's gonna be a major effect on making the community better. And, uh, I mean, I can't picture a better neighbor than having a second branch of, uh, the Lawrence County Government Center to be there. It will be maintained, it will be taken care of, and then, uh, that beautiful neighborhood will stay the way it is. And, uh, I just think, you know, from this perspective, all three of us, you know, as commissioners, you can take this stuff very seriously. We're fortunate, like I said, Joe would ask how I commend you again for all your efforts in this. Cause I know you're our numbers guy and you crunch those numbers. And, uh, it's something that's, it's gonna pay. And, uh, Chairman, but thank you for your leadership on this. Beginning, when we took office, um, I said before, we, me and Commissioner Kenny went around and visited everybody. CYS, JPO, Pumped, uh, meetings and, uh, you know, we seen and we noticed, we're running out of space. And, uh, you know, what do you do when you're running out of space? And we seen that happen, you know, with, with that issue from district attorney. We had to find spaces at courthouse and it made us some very difficult decisions. Um, we had to move people around. With this facility, we're gonna have space. We can grow if we have to grow and if we don't grow, we can resell and provide revenue for the county. So, you know, in retrospect, you know, I think this is the right decision. It's a decision that's gonna move the county forward, it's gonna help the county, it's gonna help the neighborhood, and it's good for the community, it's good for the city of Newcastle. So we're staying and we're very close, uh, to the, it's like, what are we, about a mile and a half away? So, uh, you know, I, I just can't think of enough. Like, the more I think about it, it's like, you know, this has been almost, almost, it's been two years of this. We, we started looking probably about a month or two in our terminal, once we saw that it was, you know. This opportunity come and when you have an opportunity, you have to take advantage of your opportunity. And, uh, all the way around, like I said, I like to praise, uh, the diocese for their cooperation. It's been very great. George Masuda, it's been gentleman. He was one who maintained the building out there and that's the importance. We're buying a building if it's maintained and well taken care of. We're not buying something that was abandoned. And, uh, you know, just to, there's spots in there and, uh, that's pretty much all I have on that. As I said, I feel good today. This is something, I feel we, as a, as a team of commissioners, have accomplished something. And something positive for the community. This is just the beginning. We have a lot of positive things happening in our community, you know. Uh, Commissioner Kennedy's at a meeting right now, looking for something more positive. It's gonna continue. So, um, that's pretty much what I have to say, Chairman.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Sanada. This is proposed Resolution 361. Uh, would you care to make a motion for it?
I make a motion that we accept this.
I will second your motion and request a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Proposed Resolution, uh, three sixty-two is a budget amendment. Uh, this was presented to us by the Public Safety Department, I believe. They received, uh, one thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents as a reimbursement for the twenty twenty-five Homeland Security Conference. This revenue had not been budgeted, it was unexpected. They've asked us to apply this revenue to their travel and training, uh, line item in the same amount. That's what this resolution will do. Chris, any questions?
No, it's more than that.
Thank you. This is Resolution three sixty-two. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second that and ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have a, uh, transfer, uh, falling under the commissioner's jurisdiction, requesting that three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents be taken from the commissioner's contingency account and earmarked for the telephone and internet, uh, line item. Once again, the amount is three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Resolution three sixty-three. Chris, any questions? Would you care to make a motion for this?
I make a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll second your motion and ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have three administrative transfers. Uh, first coming from our recycling office, they're asking for a three hundred dollar transfer uh, from their contingency into a line item of land building rental. This is for account closure and final document destruction. Uh, the public defender's office, excuse me, is asking for a three dollar transfer from their contingency into their access account. Help me with access account for money. Oh, the storage for money. Okay. Thank you, Joe. And then finally, the tax claim office is asking for a five hundred dollar transfer from their line item of contracted consulting into their telephone line item. Chris, do you have any questions about these three requests?
Oh, very, very clear. And I make, I'll make a motion to accept.
I thank you. I'll offer a second and we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Gobler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Other announcements, I know we've, we've, uh, covered this, but I'm gonna say it one more time. And I'll do it in the order that's listed, uh, on the agenda. There will be a special meeting of the commissioners on Wednesday, November twelfth. And correct what's listed there, eight thirty AM in this room, open to the public. Uh, next Tuesday, being that it's election day, we will not have a commissioners' meeting. However, the courthouse will be open. On November eleventh, Tuesday, the courthouse will be closed in observance of Veterans Day. We will not have a commissioners' meeting that day. There will be a commissioners' meeting on November eighteen at ten AM, open to the public, followed by the quarterly meeting of the retirement board on the eighteenth. On the twenty-fifth, which is a Tuesday, uh, there will not be a county commissioners' meeting because the commissioners will be attending the county, state county commissioners' association fall conference in, uh, Brockton County. And then it's not listed here, but I do wanna remind everybody that next Monday, November three, nine AM in the morning, uh, an election board meeting, uh, open to the public in this room.
And there will also be a prison board meeting, correct, Chris?
Yes.
On Wednesday, November nineteenth at twelve o'clock.
Thank you. Nineteenth is the third Wednesday of the month. Prison board meeting. Thank you. At twelve noon. Thank you very much. That takes us to, uh, public comment. I will open the floor for any comments.
Lot of questions, but, um, rather wait, but I need to copy Jerry's, I guess I'll ask him now.
Please, go ahead.
You had mentioned there were some stipulations in the sales agreement by the diocese. Can you say what those are, please?
Do you have that document with you? I know you loaned it to me. Thank you so much. Okay, let me get to the right page, Debbie. Here we are. Subject to the express condition that the party of the second part shall not use any portion of the subject, party of the second part being the county, uh, shall not use any portion of, of the subject premises hereby conveyed for any of the following uses hereinafter referred to as prohibited uses. One, the sale of alcoholic beverages. Two, any type of adult entertainment or business enterprise. Three, use as a church, shrine, or for any type of religious worship. Four, any commercial office or retail use that is in any manner inconsistent with the teaching and beliefs of the Catholic faith, including but not limited to abortion or abortion-related services as solely determined by the bishop of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Pittsburgh. Uh, those were the four stipulations that I came across. I posed the question regarding the, uh, food distributions, uh, program that they have. I couldn't find it in this document, however, in the resolution that we passed a few weeks ago, there was a paragraph that indicated that the county would agree to allow the ongoing, uh, use for that program for at least eighteen months.
So I could copy those stipulations?
Yeah, I would assume you can, since we've adopted it. So, uh, you know, once, once Vanessa's able to make a copy for you, we can do that.
Are you gonna have to expand your maintenance staff to take care of that building?
We've not, uh, crossed that bridge yet.
What about?
Don't know the answer to that at this point. Obviously, it's something we gotta talk about.
Do you have, do you know when you're going to plan to occupy it?
Not at this point. We still don't know that either. This, this, we're taking this one step at a time. And, uh, this is a big step. And our next step will be consideration of some of the things you just raised.
And I might have asked this before, but how are you financing it?
Capital, capital reserve.
Capital reserves and there's that money in there? How much is in the capital reserve altogether?
I'd have to look into the title and see, uh, talk to the control of us, I believe, in, at the, when we, when we originally budgeted and we had that one path into, there would say, uh, a few million dollars.
Can you let me know?
I could.
That's all.
Thank you, Debbie. Chris, hold on. Vanessa, don't leave without your pack. I wanna make sure I give you your pack. And Vanessa can get you that, uh, agreement.
Thank you.
Any other public, uh, comment? Thank you. Uh, closing comments from Mr. Sanada.
No, I think, uh, we've accomplished a lot today and this is another day, I think, if you look back at it, this is just the start. I will say that, you know, it's, it's fallen on the chairman of programs that Debbie, who, this whole process has allowed, um, we will be very transparent the whole way, uh, when it comes to, uh, construction, any of that stuff. So guidelines and rules that Jason, uh, Joe, all, you know, as far as, you know, we're, we can, we have the best deals, the best prices we can, when it comes to, uh, anything that we have to do with that.
One of the things that is on the horizon, and it's a sooner rather than a later issue, that is, uh, one of the things we're contemplating is, uh, locating our folks that work at Children and Youth Services to the facility, uh, out on Cascade Street. So we have to determine the future of the Almyra Building. As of the, and, and I've witnessed this, I remember when I took office, the Almyra Building housed not only children and youth I remember when I took office, the Almyra Building housed not only children and youth services, but we rented space to a number of at least two or three outside agencies. That's no longer the case. The staff, because of the demand, the unfortunate demand, it's placed on CYS. We've had to expand staff to the point where that building is full and slightly beyond full, I would argue. So again, one of the things we're contemplating is the possible movement of the CYS office to the St. Joseph's facility, which then means that we have to have conversations as far as the future of the Almyra Building. That's, that's on our list of things that we have to do. Maybe I interrupted you. I'm sorry.
I was fine. I'm just saying everything, it's a slow process, but we're involved. It's a guideline, so in, like I said, because I know Joe has been looking at every option that's out there. And, you know, at the end of the day, this is a board of commissioners that don't like spending money. And we'd like investing money. I use that word, which we have, we have our money. And I use it for anything like this, where like I can say this is investment, which is not often, you know, the way we can. I hope this investment, I have a lot of investments.
Thank you much. Debbie, anything else? Thank you. Vanessa, Joe, anything we've forgotten?
We'd still walk further with Commissioner Kennedy, isn't it? I think we'd bother a problem.
I'll let you and Dan work that out. I'm, 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 I'm to blame for sometimes the length of these meetings. I know I go a little slow and make them a little too meticulous, so I get some of the blame.
Yeah, I will say this, people don't understand the whole process here. It's their fault, not yours. You explain everything and every detail. It's like you're teaching school to do the math. I don't know what you do, but I mean, which I can give credit for. Because I've been to meetings, I've been to a lot of meetings, and people just bang things right out. A lot of stuff goes over people's heads. So if you come to a commissioner meeting, you will understand the process.
Either that or we'll put you to sleep. I've been known to do that. Thank you very much. There being no other business to be brought before the board, may I have an adjournment motion?
Motion with adjourn?
I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye. I oppose. Same sign, motion carries. It means adjourn. Thank you, everybody.
I know a couple of school boards that I wish they would explain things a lot more than they don't, so.
Sure.